Okay, it's six o'clock on 2 April 19th. One called special work session of council to order. Shannon, call it.
Mr. Scatiti.
Here.
Mr. Fury.
Here.
Mrs. Walker.
Present.
Mrs. Labby.
Here.
Mr. Bellin.
Here.
Mr. Post. Mr. Barr.
Okay, next we have a presentation by Larry Finch.
Thank you, Council. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk to you about this subject. Obviously, this is something that's been of interest to the residents and everybody in the city of Twinsburg for decades. The central area in Twinsburg is, basically, the whole idea of what we're going to talk about tonight is how to go about improving the central area, incentivizing investment in downtown. And while there's been gradual progress to get things moving, there's still some missing pieces from the puzzle, and there are key factors that are going to make change inevitable down there. It's going to be now a matter of putting the right pieces in place to make it happen. So there are a couple of elements, I think, are involved in this whole effort that have been missing. One is an economic development plan specifically tailored for the central area that deals with some of the tools available to stimulate investment, and that's primarily what we're going to talk about tonight. Let's start just first by talking about where is the central area? I know many of you have been involved with this before, so you know basically what we're talking about. Karen, you may not have been involved in to the depth that many of the others are, having been involved with the CIC and other activities. For several years, we've been identifying the central area as that area lying basically between the I-480 corridor and the Tinkers Creek River Corridor, Creek Corridor. So that's basically the Tinkers Creek Corridor on the east, that's this area, basically, and the I-480 corridor on the west. It extends to Twin Hills Boulevard and Commons, which is right here, to the bridge at the split between Cannon and Ravenna Road. So that's basically the area we've identified, and we've been consistently talking about it as the central area of Twinsburg. So why created an economic development plan for the central area? Well, because historically, development has overpassed this area in favor of the greenfield sites in the hinterland of the community and larger parcels of greenfield industrial property, which were more easily developed and which were markets for residential subdivision. No new investment has occurred in the central area, the area we just showed on the map, for some time. Existing buildings continue to age, and they continue to show signs of obsolescence and deferred maintenance, some of which are worse than others. And we've begun to address some of those things by acquiring some of the properties. The CIC has been active and acquired a couple of properties to put them in place for the kind of development that we hope to get going down here. It's also, there are a number of vacant, basically, there are a lot of holes in the downtown. There are underdeveloped properties and just totally undeveloped properties that occur in that area. So let me talk a little bit about the building condition. We did a building condition survey here, it's been almost two years ago now. This is the results of that building condition survey for the central area. The yellow dots are properties that are in standard condition. There are some blue dots in the area that you can't see because there are very few of them that are more recent development, and they are basically the, at the intersection of Twin Hills Parkway, where the Dunkin' Donuts is probably the most recent building in the entire central area. The red dots on the map indicate those properties that are in substandard condition. This is based on an exterior visual inspection of the properties. So they're either, they're showing characteristics of deferred maintenance, like, you know, shingles are in bad condition, siding's in bad condition, or they have other physical characteristics that have not been maintained very well, or they're just plain physically and functionally obsolete. So they're no longer meeting contemporary space demands for commercial space or for residential space, whatever the case might be.
Larry, was that done by the Building Department, or who did the assessment?
That was basically just an exterior survey by the Planning Department.
Okay, thank you.
So this is an area that basically is the historic core of the city, and several of the heritage properties are located in this area. On this map, you can see there's kind of a okra color and then a red color. The okra color are those structures that have been constructed basically between the end of the First World War and the Civil War. The red properties were those constructed around the Civil War period or earlier. So you can see there's some old properties located in this area, and they reflect some of the history of the city of Twinsburg. The yellowish color is basically those properties constructed since 1920, and then the white properties are those that are vacant. So this area has history, and it also has some obsolescence and problems with structural condition.
Larry?
Yes?
The Brick House, that's on 82, I think, my Spanish teacher used to live there. What's going to happen to that? Are you going to preserve it, or?
We aren't going to do anything with it.
Okay.
That's up to the property owner.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna, well, we'll get into that in a little bit.
Okay.
That building is for, has been for sale on a couple of occasions. Right now, I don't know what its status is. There was a for sale sign on it fairly recently. But again, you know, I don't know what its status is, and the sales, for sale sign is gone currently.
Okay.
Obviously, we've looked at this area repeatedly. The 2014 comprehensive plan did a in-depth analysis of that area. The current plan update, comprehensive plan update, that dealt primarily with sustainability, has also looked at the area. And a number of things basically are consistent across the studies that have been done for this area, and particularly those are basically the land uses in this, particularly in the East Aurora Road Corridor in transition. We have got a number of buildings there that are, actually, very few of them are owner-occupied. A number are for rent, and the CIC's acquired a few, so those have been cleared and they're vacant. So that whole corridor, basically, on the south side of East Aurora Road, Grandy Village owns properties that are currently vacant. So the whole strip there basically is in a state of transition. The central area generally lacks pedestrian conveniences and pedestrian accommodations, things like consistent sidewalks, crosswalks, you know, signalized intersections that allow for pedestrian safely crossing. And basically, it's very difficult for pedestrians to use the central area. I don't know if you've walked around down there, around the square, primarily because of the nature of the busy state routes that occur on three sides of that intersection. As we said before, there are older properties that are showing signs of obsolescence, deferred maintenance. There are no real unifying elements like a consistent street lighting program, or consistent sidewalk width and streetscape elements, anything like that. And basically, there are a number of undeveloped or underdeveloped properties where they could actually contribute to the economic vitality of the central area by redevelopment, whether it's commercially or residentially. So basically, they are the donut holes in this, in this particular area. The underdeveloped properties, particularly the ones east of Darrell Road, lack basic infrastructure. There are water mains and sewer mains along Darrell Road, things are absent in terms of local access roads to serve those properties, or water sewer mains into the properties. There's no infrastructure on the properties or into the properties themselves. So there are a number of things, you know, connecting streets to enable some relief of the congestion at the 82 and 91 intersection. There's just, there's a general lack of infrastructure in this area. The comprehensive plans, both the 2014 and the current plan update, have made a number of recommendations. Those recommendations continue to be valid. One is that public, our public infrastructure, things like parking sidewalks, landscaping, those kinds of things need to be provided to encourage private sector investment. The idea of encouraging multimodal uses that integrate pedestrian, bike, and transit use in that area has been strongly recommended. Increasing connectivity by adding small connecting streets that might tie East Aurora Road to Darrell and Darrell to, to other interior locations of these lots that would provide, like, alternate routes to leak traffic out when there are periods of congestion and gridlock. They also recommended, the comprehensive plans have also recommended that the city's assets of property be leveraged to encourage mixed-use development, and that the Tinkers Creek elements of the open space itself could be opened up and tied to whatever happens in the central area, to integrate that open space and develop that kind of quality-of-life feature that is currently lacking and is very, very obviously potential there. Also, there's been great concern about when development would happen here, that it would be done carefully, so that improvements would create both terminal views, public niches, broad sidewalks, public art, fountains, things of that nature, consistent landscaping, building setbacks, and building scale that would contribute to building a kind of a, a public space, public area, public room, to provide that, that focus, that sense of place that the community is lacking. Also, because of the difficulty with the state routes in the area, traffic calming features like textured pavements, crosswalks, improved intersection signage, and enhanced pedestrian safety and accommodations are all really needed in that area. Those recommendations don't come, to achieve those recommendations, it's not cheap. Obviously, there's a cost, and it requires a public investment, and it would also inquire the investment and cooperation of a developer. So we have kind of started that whole process to try and achieve that, that cooperation, and to try to achieve a, a central area plan that can be implemented that would meet the objectives that we've talked about in the comprehensive plan, and that we think the community is looking for. But again, it's going to require substantial investment. And a lot of that has got to come from the private sector. So it makes you think about, okay, well, in the past, why hasn't the private sector been investing in this area? It seems like such a great opportunity. Well, there are a number of things that kind of cool the jets for the, for the developers in this area. First of all, as most of us know here, there's, surrounding commercial areas limit the attraction of national brands to this area. We live in the market shadow of other areas around us, Aurora, Hudson, Solon, where the national brands are already located, and where they don't want to create a competing store that's going to be too close to the stores in their adjacent communities. So that is a tremendous impedance to what we're trying to accomplish here. Commercial land uses, generally speaking, have been impacted by weak market conditions, particularly since COVID, but also because of e-commerce. So the retail space is in distress, and e-commerce is continuing to eat away at that, that particular segment. Infrastructure elements, things like the sewers, as I said before, the storm basins, gas and electric, are not well-developed, and they'll add to the upfront cost for a developer when they come in to develop any significant sites here. Not so much when you're right on Darrell Road or right on East Aurora Road, but once you step one lot in from that frontage, then you've got the responsibility of extending those infrastructure facilities into the sites to serve your development. So you'd be developing that infrastructure, that public infrastructure necessary in the, in the new right-of-ways to whatever roadways are servicing your facility, and that's going to be on the developer, because the city's not going to do it upfront. Our roadway corridors have a significant amount of traffic on them, enough to make it difficult for pedestrians. However, they're not of volumes that would make a significant attraction for most of the major retailers or restaurant chains. People like, you know, so the major restaurant chains want something of 30,000 average vehicles a day or more. We have that from around the I-480 intersection, but no further than that. So the amount of average daily traffic is not up to a standard that would encourage somebody to come here because of the drive-by traffic alone. Twinsburg has been developed at a relatively low suburban density, generally speaking. That, again, is a problem because that limits the market area in terms of, you know...
What you mean by a low suburban density? Because we have half-acre lots instead of putting, I mean...
Well, it's not so much the, the area of the lots, it's the number of persons within a mile radius, a five-mile radius. If you draw a five-mile radius, or even a three-mile radius around, say, a two-mile radius for that matter, around the, the corner of 91 and 82, there's absolutely nothing from a residential market standpoint, south of I-480. So you're not going to get the residents coming to the local restaurants, you'll get the lunch trade from maybe the offices if you can attract them. If you draw that same area to the north, because of the relatively low acre-per-acre density, which is, you know, 1.2 to maybe 1.7 at the, at the most in the subdivisions, you're going to have a relatively low number compared to many other locations. So that limits the market area and the number of persons in the market area that a business might cater to. High land costs has discouraged land assembly. We've found that out ourselves with the CIC as we've tried to assemble property. And finally, they have choices, developers have choices of markets, other markets, that don't carry the same kind of risk because of these above factors. So that just raises the level of risk to somebody wanting to invest in Twinsburg because of these things like lower density, lower traffic volumes, high cost for land assembly, et cetera, et cetera. All of those things increase their cost, but don't necessarily help out in the long So the question is, how do we help reduce the risk for a developer or somebody willing to invest in the community? One way a developer can reduce his risk is by having the ability to purchase previously assembled land. We've started to do that with the CIC, so we've kind of set the stage to a certain extent, but we're not, we haven't completed that. Another thing that can be done is to eliminate costs associated with the installation of public infrastructure necessary to serve adjacent private property. So that basically is the public infrastructure that's going to be necessary to enable them to hook their local sanitary connection to the city's sanitary sewer, or to the Cleveland Water Line that happens, should be in the right-of-way. Another thing that would help the development community is if they had the ability to buy land at or below market cost. Well, we can't really help that. We may be able to to a certain extent, but, you know, they're still going to have to pay either market or above-market for the kind, for the lands that they'll be assembling that we can't help, or we can't acquire. So the next question is, okay, well, how does the city assist the development community when our fiscal resources are basically strained? There are a couple of available tools that could help us do that, and we've talked about this previously. There are basically special districts. Special districts enable you to construct infrastructure and pay the cost of that infrastructure back through tax, through the tax duplicate of improved properties. So it still requires that there is a loan or a bond put in place by the city, but the loan or the bond is not, does not count against the city's bonded or indebtedness. It's basically a revenue bond that uses the revenue of the property tax, or the revenue of the stream of property taxes that's deferred to the special district fund to pay off any debt associated with those improvements that have been constructed with it. So the two basic tools that we're looking at are the downtown redevelopment district and the tax increment finance district. The downtown redevelopment district, we've, I've circulated that over a year ago to everybody to try and get everybody thinking about this. And the economic development plan is basically the beginning step in putting that in place, because you have to have an economic development plan for the downtown redevelopment district. That's part of the requirement, as is legislation, et cetera.
So now that we have the plan, what's the next step?
Well, we're not quite, quite there yet with the plan, but we are mostly there. Everything's in the document you have, including a draft ordinance and some procedures and ideas about creating the districts and how they're managed and administered.
Do we need a historical building per, per district?
Well, yeah. There will be, I'll get to that in just a few seconds as we get on here. Basically, the downtown redevelopment districts require an historic building that is designated as the prime recipient of at least a portion of the funds generated by this program. You can also use it, the, the revenue generated from the program for the infrastructure costs or streetscape improvements for other public infrastructure. Basically, tax increment financing is a similar, similar way to go. It's been around for a long time and used by many communities, and my replacement, hopefully, and when she gets here, is well-versed in tax increment financing, she's well-versed in historic preservation, so she will be able to step right into the, right into the picture here and move forward with, with the recommendations that we're talking about. So with regard to the downtown redevelopment districts, as I said, they have to include that benefit of historic property. It can't be any larger than 10 acres in area. They can divert up to 70% of the increase in property taxes for a period of 10 years without any permission from anybody else. If you go beyond 70% or more than 10 years, then you need to work with the school district. An important thing to know is that these districts do not reduce the tax payments to the school district or anybody else below the current effective, effective rates. So nobody is losing money with this. It does not increase the property tax rate. It defers a portion of property taxes on the increase in value. So it's only the increase in value that is impacted.
So how do you get the increase in value? Do you have the audit, the auditors in Summit County come out and reassess property after the improvements are put in?
Yeah, you don't need to do it. You don't need to do anything other than issue a certificative occupancy or a building permit for the property. That gets sent to the county. The county sends the auditors out. Every year they're here, they will provide an assessment of the value of the improvement, and then that value then is what is, what the tax will be based on. That increase in value is the portion that would be deferred.
So if the building's worth $200,000?
Yep.
And we do something, we put, we put an extra lane in the road in front. To pay for that extra lane, if that property becomes then reassessed at 225, we get the property tax for the $25,000, that's the increase due to the infrastructure we put in?
You get, you get, you get the portion of the increased value that is either 70% or whatever you agree to with the school district in terms of the share of that increase. You can get up to 70% of the increased value without any permission from the school district.
If you just go 10 years?
Pardon?
If you just go 10 years?
Yeah, well, if you go, yeah, just go 10 years.
So if you think about the whole project, the value of the entire project, the infrastructure's going to be throughout it.
But when you take that baseline, when you start the district and then all the improvements and all the increase, you know, hopefully, we have some significant property tax increase in what's going to be built down there, but, you know, not necessarily the roads making the improvements, but all the other investment.
Right. You know, you're primarily hoping that you're going to get somebody who's going to build a building, or add to a building?
What if they build 90 apartment, or 90 condos?
That's, that's an assessed, that's an increase in assessed value.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. So for these downtown redevelopment districts, they have to be limited in size to no more than 10 acres, but there's no, no limit on the number of downtown redevelopment districts you can put in place. So we have been looking at this for some time. We've got three suggested downtown redevelopment districts that would provide coverage on the East Aurora Road Corridor, and provide coverage for the west side of Church Street and west side of Darrell Road, and also would provide coverage for the south side of Aurora Road around the area of town center. So the first of those is the East Aurora Road Downtown Redevelopment District. Okay, this area extends from, this is Church Street. Benefiting historic property would be the Roach House, it's located right here. The benefiting historic property would be the Roach House, located right here. It's the Chambers Office Building or Office House. It includes the, again, the Grandy Village vacant properties. It includes the CIC's vacant properties. And it extends over to the Dunkin' Donuts property. So, that's roughly, we'll get to that in a minute, but that's the physical description of that area. Everybody has a good idea what that is. The next one, which is on the west side of Darryl Road, the First Congregational Church is the benefit of historic structure. It extends to the north side of the square. There are vacant properties around here. These are city-owned vacant properties, one right here and one right here. This property, we have a site plan coming in right now for this property. So, there's the opportunity to put this in place prior to this getting assessed to start generating revenue in this downtown redevelopment district that could help fund improvements or maintenance of the Historic Twinsburg Institute.
Do you have to spend the money?
Church.
Do you have to spend the money? So, say that we came up with three different zones.
Yeah.
If the benefit or if the improvement was done in the Church North, is that money just for the, for that?
To be spent in that district.
Yes, has to be spent in, that, that district has to use that money for that district.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And a portion of it has to be spent on the benefit of historic designated property.
How far north does that go, Larry?
That's the Wilcox School.
Thank you.
Right here's Wilcox School driveway.
Okay, thank you.
The third area would be the area that's benefiting the Twinsburg Institute. The Twin Institute is right here. The Red Barn that the Historical Society owns is right here. So, that's the corner of 91 and 82. It goes all the way down to serve the Locust Grove Cemetery. This area is the area that would be the primary location for improved value because we have a new property owner here. They recently repaved the parking lot. They're looking at putting more money into that structure. So, as that improves and as perhaps other areas around it improve, it'll start generating money that would go towards the infrastructure or to the preservation of, or rehabilitation of the Twinsburg Institute.
After 10 years, can you reapply and start it again or it's 10 years and you're done?
Basically, it's 10 years and you either have to start the process all over again. There's no, no option.
Okay.
What you, you established both the life of the loan and the percent of abatement, if you will, when you do the legislation to create the district.
Have we had discussions with the school superintendent's office regarding this yet?
That's something that has to be done.
No, we haven't.
Okay. Kathy, the superintendent is aware of this. We've had some discussions about it, but nothing for the full school board. Because right now, we don't, we haven't had a discussion about the length, the term. Do we want to go beyond 10 years? And my suggestion would be yes. Because really, you're not going to get much benefit in 10 years because the first couple of years you're waiting for something to happen.
Is the max 20? Did we, did I hear that once?
Thirty.
Thirty, thank you.
So, just looking at those three areas. East Aurora, East Aurora Road District is on this line. It's roughly 9.3 acres in size, involves 26 addresses, two acres of vacant developable property, 11 century structures. So, this is the area with most of the historic structure or, you know, century structures in it. It has 10 properties with high redevelopment potential. High redevelopment potential, basically, these properties are either vacant or they're in transition. They're not just properties that are old and available. Forty-two percent of these properties are owner occupied. That's the highest amount of owner occupied properties in any one of the districts. I'm sorry, it's not side, basically. The potential revenue to be generated on the vacant, high potential properties here could be as much as $270,000 annually. So, and this is very achievable because it's working with the CIC's properties and Grandy Village's vacant properties. So, those, those properties are ready to be developed, basically, and just waiting for somebody to invest in them. Oops. The Church North District is 9.8 acres in area, 34 addresses, three acres of vacant developable property, only six century structures, eight structures with high development potential, 26, it's the lowest proportion of owner occupied structures, 26%. Has potential to generate over $170,000 annually in revenues. And just a word in terms of how that potential is developed. That's looking at the maximum lot coverage of about 35% in a $200 square foot construction value for, for the value of what could go on that property. So, it does make, we're not talking about the specific use or anything, we're just saying if you have 35% of that lot covered with a building, building costs now are in excess of $200 a square foot, it's going to be appraised at something. And at the current tax rates, that's how much money will be generated. Finally, the Institute West District. It's almost 10 acres in size with nine addresses, a few, only a few addresses, 1.3 acres of vacant land, one acre, one, only one century structure, and that'd be the, the structure, the historic structure that's required for the district.
Is that the barn?
No, it'd be the, the institute, the stone building.
Oh, okay.
The barn is, the barn is an afterthought. The institute is the historic building.
Thank you.
Forty-three percent of the properties in that district are owner occupied, but they're are, they're commercial owners, they're not residents. So, that makes this a very, a more easily modified area because people are there for the investment in the property. If they're going to make more money, they're going to be more willing to go along with, with it. And it has a potential to generate over $125,000 annually. So, assuming that that's in place, that's coverage on the west side, south side of the square. On the east side, on the east side of Darryl Road, we'd be looking to put a tax increment finance district in place. The characteristics of a, of a tax increment finance district, basically, at least of the one that we're talking about. It would run from, Tinker's Lane is right here. Richener Court is right there. This is Ravenna Road. That's east Aurora Road. Darryl Road here. Drugstore, CBS, or the Walmart, Wal, Walgreens is right here. This could be one or two areas. If it were one area, it'd be 33 acres in size and would extend from Greyside Boulevard, basically up to Tinker's Lane. It would go east to the Tinker's Creek Corridor. And of course, the west side would be the Darryl Road boundary. There are 32 properties, 14 in this area have high redevelopment potential. They're either underdeveloped properties or vacant properties. Over nine acres of vacant land is ready for development here. And that's not including the partially developed, underdeveloped properties. And only 25% of these properties are owner occupied with, with a resident owner. It could generate up to a million dollars annually if it were to be developed according to basically the comprehensive plan recommendations. So, there are ways for us to encourage and to incentivize developer interest in central Twinsburg and to acquire somebody else's investment. But, we have to set the stage and this, both the TIF and the downtown redevelopment districts can be the tools to do that, to set the stage and get things really ready to go. So, and it's not that difficult to put them in place, but it has to begin with the discussion with the school district. Particularly, and this should, should be tempered to a point where you have a better idea, at least in the, in the major TIF district, what kind of investment's going to be necessary. So, ideally, we'd have a developer-generated plan that would have some cost estimates, estimates of infrastructure with it, that you'd be able to tie and share the, the public sector costs and have the developer cooperate by involving his cost and then working out a plan for implementing those improvements. Depending upon the amount of cost involved, you may want to try to have a district that's going to be in life longer than 10 years. For the TIF, it's likely going to be 30 years. You'd want it to be 30 years so you have a longer period of time to pay for the more significant infrastructure that's going to be involved there. For the downtown redevelopment districts, they're smaller, they're going to have less infrastructure, but I'd still suggest having something in the 20 to 30-year range for them because even if you're ready to do something now, you have to get through planning commission, you have to get through design, get all the permits, and then get started. You'd be two years down the road before you're able to put a fork in the, or shovel in the ground. So, you're going to lose that period of, of, you know, being compensated for that investment. So, you need to know the length of term, the length of the term of the, of the district before you have that discussion with the school district because they're going to want to know how long and what they're going to be, how they're going to be compensated for their giving up revenue. It'll be a much easier discussion for downtown redevelopment districts. The TIF district will probably be the more difficult discussion because of its size and, and complexity. So, the next part of that is going to be developing or adopting an economic development plan. So, you have the basic bones for one right now. That can be carried on by whoever replaces me. And they, they will need to fill in whatever blanks are there and work with legal counsel for the, for the district creation, the legislation and other things that go along with that. The district ordinance that council will have to deal with will have to designate things like the effective timeline or lifetime of the district. The revenue sharing arrangements with the school, school district would be involved in each of those districts. It would be a separate, separate ordinance for each of the downtown redevelopment districts and a separate ordinance for the downtown, for the TIF district. So, you're looking at at least four separate ordinances. The ordinances will provide a district map for each of their respective districts and all the property, associated property information. We have all the property information right now, but that's as of this date. So, what you have is going to likely change a little bit before it's implemented. But, that's something that will need to go along with that ordinance creating the district. There has to be a public notice to the affected property owners and a public hearing. And then after the public hearing, you'll be able to pass legislation. Once the legislation is passed, all that needs to go to the Ohio Department of Development Services. And then there'll be the nitty gritty of creating the boards for each district and the administrative bodies that would actually oversee the management of each district and the distribution of funds and loans that might go or, or grants that might go to the historic properties.
Do they have to be separate boards or can they be a board that handles multiple districts?
I don't see any reason why there couldn't be one board for the downtown redevelopment districts, but they'll have to deal with each, basically like a separate entity because of the nature of the benefit to where the money is coming from.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, that's really, the nitty gritty is, comes after that, setting up the districts themselves, organizing the, whatever the district bylaws might be for, the bylaws for the administering entity, the downtown redevelopment district board or committee. There's an annual review required by a tax incentive review council. We already have one. That same tax incentive review council can review these. There's no reason to create another one of those. So, some of the things are already in place. And the real work is going to be once they're created and manage them once they're up and running. So, I, you know, we can, there'll be a lot of discussions between now and the time that it actually gets done, but I wanted to make sure I had the opportunity to talk to you about this before I left. And I think we're in a great position to get something going and I think we're right on the cusp of having something happen. It's just a matter of getting that first investment because once we have that first investment, I believe things are going to snowball from there. Any, any questions?
When you say first investment, you're, you're referring to the first investment by the city?
No, the first investment by the private sector, that's what we're looking for.
Thank you.
I have a question. So, would it make sense that, I mean, these are all supposed to happen concurrently, is that correct?
Well, if I were to prioritize things, I would put the east Aurora Road Downtown Redevelopment District and the, the, the one that serves the, the church. On a very high priority because both of those, one of them, we have a site plan ready right now.
Is that the dentist office?
Yes.
Yeah, by Wilcox?
Yes.
Okay. All right. My thinking is, and I, what experience do I have? I'm just saying how I think. The TIF to me, I think if, it's like if you build it, they will come kind of thing because that's where the most money will be generated from, correct?
Well, that's, yes, yeah.
And if, if that is, is developed, then wouldn't like the other districts like naturally follow as excitement, well, this is getting developed and, you know, we want in on these? Or does that, does that make sense or does that not make sense?
The problem with waiting is, once that dentist office is constructed, you lose your opportunity to get that increase in taxes in the district unless it's been formed.
Okay.
So, you have to form those districts first.
Okay.
And both those districts should be formed as soon as possible, in my opinion.
It's kind of like buying stock.
Okay.
I'm going to buy a loan.
Right, right, right.
Hopefully, it goes up. But, yeah, I think between the TIF districts, the two that are described, those are the primary. And we've engaged council for the TIF district. I did have a meeting with Rob Benjamin from Heritage. There's still excitement about the project, so that's a good thing. He's exploring different, different options for both the capital side of that as well as potential investors or tenants, you know, that could be in the space. But, yeah, I was, we were concerned with interest rates going up, but there seemed to still be enthusiasm. to still be enthusiasm on their part.
So Larry, between, between the four districts?
Yeah.
I don't have the, I'm not looking at the numbers, but there was one that was three hundred thousand, one that was a hundred and a half, third one was a hundred and twenty, and the TIFF was a million. Are my numbers close to?
Yeah, generally speaking, right.
Okay. So you're talking one point six million dollars roughly in total upside potential revenue?
Right.
Do you have any estimates at this point about what sort of investment in streets, enhancements, those kind of things might, we might be looking at?
Well, that's, that's a problem, because right now, we don't have any, we don't have a plan
Mm-hmm.
To, to base those estimates off of.
Sure. I mean, is it, is it, is it a hundred thousand, is it ten million? Just, just an order of magnitude, I won't hold you to it, I'm just, I'm just curious.
Well.
I mean, for the, I mean, for the downtown area that we're, that there is focusing on, I mean, we've guessed, what, four to five million in infrastructure, road improvements?
Yeah, for the TIFF, we're talking about the TIFF.
For the TIFF district, so each of those funds have to stay within their district.
Right.
Right.
So, so when you look at like the church one that he's talked about, or another one, while funds can be used to help the church and their historical preservation, it can also be used for streetscape and other things too, which is
Yeah.
Really where that all comes together, when we're, when we're talking about making that presence in the downtown area, and, you know.
Right.
All those districts can work together to make streetscapes that match
Sure.
Enhance all that, our central area.
Ideally, we'd have a streetscape pattern
Mm-hmm.
That would be applicable to the entire area.
Okay.
So that'd be a standard for both church street side, the East Aurora side, and Darrell Road side.
Okay.
Standard street lights, standard pedestrian amenities, those kinds of things. Sidewalks, certain five-foot wide sidewalk, whatever.
Right.
You know, those things can be, we can determine what we want in terms of the streetscape part, basically at any time, and put that in place at any time. The more difficult thing is, when you look at a large piece like the area east of Darrell Road, where you're going to have some kind of interior roadway configuration of which you don't have an idea of yet.
Right.
And you'd also be looking to tie the Tinker's Creek Corridor with multipurpose paths, public amenities that might go along the, the Tinker's Creek area, those kinds of things that would pull everything together, create that, that quality of life and that experience that everybody's looking for, like Chagrin Falls in Twinsburg. That's going to be something that's going to require more of a plan effort on the part of the developer for that area. The, the benefit of doing the Downtown Redevelopment Districts as soon as possible is, the benefited historic structures begin to receive benefits when you start
You establish the district.
Paying, coming in.
Okay.
So whether you're making infrastructure improvements, or whether you're helping the, the identified historic structure, or whether you're working with a loan or a grant for other qualifying historic properties. You've got several, you know, century homes in the East Aurora Road District, they're going to need rehab. Those funds can be used by any income-producing property in that area. Can't be used on somebody's residence, but it can be used on somebody who's using that property as an income-producing residence. So that can happen early on. I mean, that's a benefit for everybody.
What, what mechanisms do we have at our disposal as the city to, I don't want to say force or ensure, so for example, we'll, we'll just take the, the north corridor as an example, right? I know that there are certain properties in that, in that district right now that haven't been maintained, you know, the, the building faces don't, you know, aren't up to par, those kind of things. What is, what's to shield us from, you know, spending this money, making improvements that we can make, and then the property owners still not doing anything? Still not keeping up their property?
Well, the only thing we can do is basically make sure that the international property code is being maintained. So the building department can, can cite for violations. We can't just have somebody tear down a property because
Right.
We don't like the way it looks.
Right.
If there's a, if there's a violation or an issue with it, then we have a more aggressive building department now, and those things we can address.
Okay. Okay. So short of the building being out of compliance, the answer is nothing?
Kinda.
Okay, and that's fine. I just, that's fine.
I mean, the Cornell property on the corner, that was recently torn down.
Yes.
The owner knew that there were issues with that building. The building department was keeping after them on the violations they had. So between the, the owner's realization that the, the building was going to be difficult to maintain, and the fact that the city was enforcing its regulations, contributed to that building going away. We didn't force it, but at the same time, we wanted it to be maintained in a proper manner. So what led to the demolition of that building was the property owner's request that it be demolished, not ours. But the end result is, we have a cleared property and the opportunity to make something happen on that in the future.
Okay. One, one last question. So there is investment necessary, or we believe that, that investment by the city would, would spurn this development by private stakeholders.
Right.
There was a, there was a slide in your, in your presentation that listed all the, the reasons, by your estimation, that private business has not, you know, has not done that to this point. So is it, my understanding then, that you, it's your assertion that if we were to do that, those, those negatives or a lot of those reasons would, would no longer be the case?
Well, we know from all the developers we've talked to in the past, that they're going to be wanting some assistance from the city to get over the hump. And some people have been talking about tax abatement, but everybody's talking about tax increment financing. And that's because it eliminates a lot of that upfront cost for the developer, and is a benefit for everybody. I mean, it's a tool that's been used everywhere. The Downtown Redevelopment Districts don't have the same requirements that the TIFF district would in terms of financing infrastructure. With the Downtown Redevelopment District, you don't have to float a bond to get those things started. You just get them in place, the money starts flowing to the identified funds that have been set up, and then the money's dispersed from those funds after it's accumulated. So there's no borrowing money to do an infrastructure project, although you could do that. You'd have that revenue stream after properties were improved to be able to float a bond.
Okay.
But for a TIFF, where you have a developer's commitment to invest in the property, that, that's basically the bank you're going to when you go to the market, to sell a bond to finance that bond.
Okay. Thank you.
Larry, is this what Hudson did when they were building First in Maine, do you know?
Yes.
Okay. So, and obviously, it was very successful.
Yeah.
And how long was theirs? Do, do you know?
I'm sure it was thirty years.
Thirty years?
Yeah.
Okay. Second question is, because of it, the historical buildings in each, are there, are there any grants that are also available? Has that been explored?
There are grants only to income-producing properties.
Mm-hmm.
And it has to be a designated historic property. We only have three designated historic, historic properties that are listed on the National Register, so we only have three properties that would qualify for grants, and all three of those are institutionally owned, so they would not qualify for a grant.
Okay.
They would qualify for a loan.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody?
Good.
Okay. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
One more question, Larry.
Yes.
What's your vision for that, for it, for the TIFF area? Do you have a vision?
Well, I think we've talked about that many times, and you could probably get some idea looking at the 2014 comp plan.
Okay.
I think what happens, going to happen, there's going to be something like that, not necessarily that. It could be much different, I don't know, but basically, you know, it involves a significant residential component with, you know, views of Tinker's Creek and, you know, the amenities associated with having the ability to walk to, on the trail, or walk to the plaza, or walk wherever you wanted to go, that kind of stuff.
Good stuff.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sorry for the voice. My old age, I'm losing my voice.
Larry, can we get a copy of the presentation?
Absolutely.
It's in your
Anybody else have any items for discussion? Audience participation?
There was one to find out.
Okay. Miscellaneous, anybody have any miscellaneous?
Burger's and beer's opening.
Soon.
Okay. Like, they were shooting for
Is the Mexican restaurant still open this summer?
Yeah, they're, they're both shooting for May, or went in May.
Okay.
No, they had a job fair.
The first appeared recently.
Right.
They're going to look for the
Other guy's seen enough people working there.
For the load. They're really pushing hard to get open. I think some of their issues have been materials, so, but, yeah, they're aggressively pushing, and we're aggressively pushing for a load, so.
Look, where are you in the process to replace Larry?
So that's what I was going to share, so that kind of
Can we?
We have
We're still in the following.
We have selected a candidate, and made an offer yesterday, and yesterday, like yesterday, she accepted.
Can you share her resume?
I should.
Thank you.
She's working currently, she's kind of boring, so she's currently working in Salem, and she's managing our TIFF district in the northern part of Salem's downtown area, so she worries about possible for business retention, bring again, and also just managing, she's really excited about the downtown areas of, she has a lot of streets, streetscapes up there. She's pretty much hands-on, but there's this
Ted.
Closest meeting.
Yeah.
Anything else on the miscellaneous? Okay. I want to make a motion to excuse our absent members, Mr. Poste and Mr. Bar, is there a second?
A second.
Second, any discussion? Shannon, call the room.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Labby?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?